...or prayer. Dear Lord, this evening as we go about our business in the city of Goodyear, I ask that you look over us, give us the wisdom to make decisions that are in the benefit of the residents and the citizens and businesses of Goodyear. I ask that you watch over our public safety and city staff as they go about their day-to-day business, working for all of us in the city of Goodyear. I ask that you be with the Kavanaugh family this evening as they're traveling on family affairs, as well as Vice Mayor Cavalier as he jets about the globe. With that, we ask this in your name. Amen. As far as roll call goes, I ask for a motion to excuse both the Mayor Kavanaugh and Vice Mayor Cavalier. As you've heard in my invocation, Mayor Kavanaugh, our thoughts are with him and his wife Linda this evening as they attend to a family funeral, and Vice Mayor Cavalier as he gets much-needed respite on a two-year planned vacation.
Motion to excuse.
A second.
Motion by Councilmember Scott, a second by Councilmember Lord. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Five oh. Got minutes for March 2000, or pardon me. Is there, yeah. Ask for acceptance, or a motion for the minutes of the regular meeting held on September 11th, 2006, and minutes of a special meeting held on September 13th. No motion necessary. Acceptance, pardon me. Everybody, acceptance. And ask for motion that we approve of March 2006 expenditures?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Scott, second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lord. I think all three, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Should've said if there were any questions. Bear with me, folks, this evening, this is obviously a first for me, so. Communications, is this the point that you wanted, or is number seven the point where you wanted to argue? Okay. I'd ask if there are any comments, commendations, or councilmembers' report on current events. Councilmember Lord.
Yeah, just a few things. Again, attended greater Phoenix Economic Council, and again reassurance by the council that they are working diligently to bring more businesses into the West Valley, trying to balance out the valley and put some more on our side. And I talked to our economic development, and I thought I was going to get a paper on this, but I didn't. Through the different projects they are working with them currently on, and a couple very special projects, and hopefully they'll happen. And the other thing, attended the Hispanic Leadership Dance for Success, and realized the pride in which they take for their organization in raising money for scholarships for their young people. And it was very enjoyable. And today, attended the West Valley Alliance. And basically what we're doing is we're trying to pool the resources from all the West Valley communities together, so that we can be using each other's resources, also coordinating dates of activities, so that the surrounding communities will be attending each other's activities.
Councilmember Lord, was that just for transportation, or was that for education?
Well, it's parks, it's parks, it's activities, it's overall.
The whole alliance?
Yes, yes. So if we have a facility that's not being used, and there's another city that needs a place to have an event, then they can use ours, and so it'll be kind of a centralized setup, so that everybody will be able to queue into what's happening.
Councilmember on.
Well, we had some exciting news today. Channel 11 came out and met with our Director of Water and Wastewater. Shaun, you're here. I don't know if you've heard any later news on when they're going to show. Did you want to say anything? You're going to be on television.
Mayor, councilmembers, the city had an opportunity to participate in a 30-minute news piece that Channel 11 is producing on salinity and groundwater. So we got an opportunity through the Central Arizona Salinity Study. We were able to say some comments and discuss the options that the city's looking into through Kennedy Jakes Consulting, and then also some recommendations that will come out of the CAS study, on how we can implement some long-term strategies and plans to cost-effectively develop a water resource that will be able to meet the needs of our city. It was good, it was a good opportunity.
That's it? Any others? Okay. With that, move to citizen comments and appearances from the floor. And first, I think we'll start with a brief staff presentation from Harvey Kraus and his crew, if I'm not mistaken. Is that the plan? Correct me.
Yes, it is.
Sorry. Is it now, or? Sorry, I was given mixed rec.
Oh, I thought.
Later on in the agenda. I apologize.
Disunderstood.
Okay.
It's my fault.
That's okay. See? These guys get me all confused. I'm trying to get off to a good start. Okay, well then with citizens' comments.
This way.
Yes.
Staff does have.
That's right.
Some comments we would like to make. First of all, I'd like Brian Dolkey, talked to him late this afternoon. He wants everybody to know he's doing well and hopes to be out of the hospital midweek and be back with us about October 10th. Chief Mark Brown, wanted to make a quick update to you in terms of the graffiti task
Mayor, members of the council, as many of you have noticed and often commented on some of the issues with graffiti that we're seeing, last Thursday at the Far West Valley Chiefs' meeting, we had a briefing, and there is a commitment by the Far West Valley Chiefs to do kind of a task force to address the issues that we're seeing with graffiti in our cities. We're looking at the area specifically along I-10. They seem to be the most popular for taggers to use, because why? Their tagging gets seen by thousands of people. So, for them, it's very popular. For us, it's very frustrating, because now the owner of the property is required to remove that, and oftentimes, they're very slow to do that, and it encourages more graffiti. So what we're trying to do is get to at least some operational elements of identifying them, using some intel, information sharing. We're doing some of that now, and trying to go after at least identifying some of these tagging crews that are doing this in the cities of Tolleson, Abundale, Goodyear, and Buckeye, along the I-10 corridor. So we're addressing that right away. We're hoping to have at least an operations plan next month, and start doing this, and in the interim, working with our respective code enforcement personnel to make sure that that gets removed as quickly as possible. Mr. Mayor, Jim Nichols has an introduction to be made.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just want to take this opportunity to introduce Raul Veria, who is our new Director of Engineering. He is joining us, this is actually his first day. Wanted to welcome him to the city. He joins us from the city of Mesa, where he was the Assistant City Engineer. Also want to take the opportunity to thank Dave Ramirez, who has been serving as the Acting Director of Engineering for the past several months, doing a great job with that. And so we appreciate his help, and we welcome Raul onboard.
Welcome onboard, Raul.
And the last staff report is the city attorneys.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we had some good news this morning. You have a letter in front of you on the dais from the Arizona Attorney General's Office. They've completed their review of the possible open meeting issues. They have found that there were no violations on the part of the city council on this matter, and they've closed their file on this issue. They thanked the council for their cooperation in this matter, and cited to several factors in their decision-making, namely self-reporting on the part of the mayor, the subsequent ratification of the original action by the council, and the fact that the council was proactive and sought open meeting law training during the course of this investigation. So I'm happy to report that to you this evening.
Thank you.
That's the end of our report.
Just of note, we all sat here for two hours last week and went through that open meeting law and ethics training, so. Some good news from the Attorney General. Now with that, we'll move to citizens' comments and appearances from the floor. I have a few cards up here, and I'll just take them in order of how they were received. I have a Mr. Roger Matlin. Is he here? Something?
Good evening. My name's Roger Matlin. I live here in Goodyear at 1-8079 West Paseo Way, up in the Estrella Mountain area. The reason I'm here today is because about four months ago, the city managed to, and the finance department specifically, managed to change my address in its system and stopped sending me utility bills. And I found out about this one day when I came home from a business trip and I had no water in my home. I figured, you know, once, yeah, I was upset, obviously, but I went to the city, I went to the finance department, I spoke to, I think it was Marty Xstein, if that's the correct pronunciation of her name, and I was assured that everything would be taken care of, utilities were going to be turned back on, everything was going to be fine, no charges or anything, that it was a mistake on the city's part. And the mistake was that you have a computer system that allows two addresses in your system for residents that are listed under the utilities. And so somebody changed one of those, and the other one was left the same. The one that was left, the normal address, the correct mailing address, was actually a P.O. box. I get all the junk mail and all the worthless flyers that I get from Goodyear, and the other address, all my utility bills were going to, at least for water and sewer, here from the city. That was brought to the attention of the people in the finance department, utilities. They assured me everything was being taken care of. I had my checkbook in my hands, saying, let's just take care of this now, because I haven't been laid on payments. I, you know, always pay my bills on time. I have a perfect credit record. Well, I was assured that I'd get a bill in a couple of days and go ahead and just pay the bill. Of course, two weeks later, I come home again from a couple of days out on a business trip, and my water shut off. And once again, I scrambled down to the city offices, I spoke to a very nice woman named, her name was Terry. She was, I guess, sitting in a kind of an interim position in that department. And she handled the billing, accepted my check, and assured me everything would be taken care of, and that utilities would be turned back on. Well, they were turned back on, but of course, I still haven't received a bill from the city, as assured. And the last time I checked, my address is still the incorrect address in the system. Now, it's bad enough that that's happened to me, because that's just annoying to me. But the fact that there are a couple of people in the city that work for the city services that have indicated to me, this is apparently a very common trend lately, that you have some kind of problem in your computer system, and there are a lot of people that are having their utilities turned off, because somebody in the city doesn't know how to manage their computer system, and people are not getting their utility bills. And this individual said that, he said that they had four times as many calls to turn utilities back on as a result of a mistake by the city with the utilities maintenance system for the billing. So I'm just here because twice is bad enough, you know, I'm a type 1 diabetic, have been my whole life, and obviously, I want to have a clean environment in my house, I maintain a nice home, I pay my taxes, I do everything I'm supposed to, and the city just keeps failing. And, you know, Marty Xstein was just, I won't use the words, but insert a word that you might think I want to say here. She was just simply rude. And the people in the finance department are simply incompetent, and you need to do something about this, because, you know, you damage appliances in the home. You keep turning the water off, you know, I've already been told by the people at GE Services that, you know, you turn off the water softener, or you stop the floater, it damages the water softener, you know, so what the hell am I supposed to do?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Matlin, is that right? Mr. Matlin?
Matlin.
Matlin. Gentlemen, right behind you is Larry Lang.
He's the Finance Director. He will go out in the hallway and work with you, and we will correct this tomorrow. And sorry for any inconvenience that this has caused you.
Absolutely. I appreciate your attention to this.
And we appreciate that you brought it before us, and I'm sorry that it got to the point that you had to bring it before us.
Oh.
And we're really sorry that the service was not what it should be.
Like I said, for me, it was, you know, it's enough, but, you know, people that have children or something like that, they can't really afford to come home and not have water in their home, you know, so it seems like a pretty significant issue, and it's not, apparently, it's not just me, it's quite a few people. I believe, I was told, most of them are up in Estrella Mountains. I don't know if there's some unusual trend there, but.
Mr. Matlin, what I'd ask is, talk to Mr. Lang, he's right behind you. He'll address your immediate concerns of getting things resolved, but I'd also ask staff to maybe notify us and get back to us as to any unusual patterns that may be existing, as it relates to any water shut offs as of late. Obviously, we've had a lot of changes in our accounting systems with our utility bills in the city over the last several months, and so we want to make sure we solve any problem that might exist immediately. So if you wouldn't mind, just turn around, you don't, and talk to Mr. Lang. I don't have your phone number on here, so make sure he gets your phone number and your contact information, and then staff will report back to us what resolution was, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out. Appreciate it. Got, next one on the list is Mr. Timothy Chapman, I'm going to assume, it's Timothy Chapman, not Chapman-Timothy. Okay. Mr. Chapman.
Hi, my name is Tim Chapman. I own a little company next to the water treatment facility. I've been there a year since August. I moved in in August, and for two, three months, there was no odor at all, and for the last year, it's so bad that I've almost gotten sick three times in the last two months. And I have a strong stomach, but I used to raise hogs when I was younger, so picture a hog farm and a chicken farm and mix it together. This is worse than that. It comes into the buildings and it lingers, and it's all parts of the day and everything of that sort. And I wanted to ask the group here if anything's been done yet, or is going to be done, because you're building houses back there, and the whole community in that area smells this odor, which is very bad, and it's affecting companies on Litchfield Road, all the way up to those neighborhoods over there, and Pebble Creek and everything. And I'm afraid something's going to happen to a little child or an older person that's building these new homes right behind it.
I'm going to ask our Water Services Director, our Water Resources Director, to field that question for me, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor, councilmembers, I've been in weekly contact with the management at Lipsco regarding the fugitive voters at their Palm Valley Water Reclamation Facility. I've fielded numerous calls from citizens, I've been, I've had calls forwarded to me from City Hall. I provided an update in the form of a yellow paper last week to Mayor and Council on the attempts that Lipsco has been making to address the situation. They have installed a temporary carbon scrubber that should help mitigate some of the fugitive voters. Obviously, that hasn't occurred. If I may make a recommendation, Lipsco has offered to meet with Mayor and Council in a public forum to address the steps that they're taking to correct the situation. This has been going on for numerous months. I feel the pain of the citizens, I'm getting to know the Kirschboms very well. Probably have them over for dinner some night. And I think at this point, it would be best if you heard directly from the management at Litchfield Park.
Service Company.
Yeah, Litchfield Park Service Company. The problem can be solved, it's an issue of capital. This is not a new technology, this is a proven technology. Order scrubbing has been around for many, many years, and it can be addressed. I think they're making attempts to do that, I just think that it's taking too long personally, and I think at this point, it would be best if you heard directly from them. I could set that up and get them on an agenda in the future if you'd like.
I'm seeing a bunch of heads nodding, yes.
We need to get it settled. We can't even play golf on the Palm Valley, of course. I know that for a fact, the smell is so bad. And this week, just driving from Pebble Creek to the City Hall, it's been really bad.
We started as staff, we started an odor log, where we send up staff twice a day in and around the area, and we know what we smell, where we smell, prevailing winds.
So you're now sending staff on the city taxpayers' dime to go up and monitor, which is.
We need to, we want to ensure that the issue with odor is related to Palm Valley, that it was not construction at another site, at an industry, there's some industry on McDowell. We wanted to make sure that the problem was Litchfield Park Service Company at their Palm Valley facility.
Yeah. I think it's great to meet with these folks, there's no doubt that will inform all of us, but if we already know what the solution is, and it's just not happening, then I think by the time we meet with them, I would like our city attorney to have some advice for us with regard to our legal recourse here. A year is too long to put up with this.
You know, Mr. and Mrs. Kirschbaum have also come out, and I don't know if, sir, do you have any more comments as it relates to this? I think we'll probably get into just a very brief discussion, but we've got three options when it comes to your comments this evening, and they don't relate around action-oriented conversation from the five of us that are here this evening, so we can give direction to staff, and that's, let's try and limit our conversation to that. Mr. Kirschbaum, Richard.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, we started pursuing this about six months ago, and the Department of Corporations for the State of Arizona has been involved, Chris, as well. I don't know what she's doing. We just recently sent another letter about a week, a week or so ago out, and I'm just wondering if there's any way that the city of Goodyear can take over our sanitation problem, and if that's something that we can do, that might be a lot better, excuse me, a lot more efficient, and can get done in a timely manner. And I don't want to beat a dead horse to death, but, you know, in Pebble Creek, on the Tuscany side one evening, we were there for dinner, and this was worse than the cattle farm, so. And we have to hold our breath when we get out of our car to walk from our parking area into our offices, and it's quite bad, as well as our customers and our clients, they're going, what is this smell? So it's driving people away, as well as the restaurants in the neighborhood.
I would just ask that staff expedite that conversation then between, let's go one, two, attorney, look into anything that we might possibly be able to do with it through code enforcement, fines, et cetera, make it a little bit more compelling, a reason to expedite anything that might be done from them, but maybe, yeah.
There's been fines in the past.
Doesn't work.
Not by us?
From us.
Not from us?
From us.
But I think, you know, exhaust all options, Water Department, City Attorney, if you could work together and get back to us with a yellow paper in fairly short order, you know, and even if it's, I don't want to go into the action-oriented conversation, but if we're talking about scheduling future items, maybe something to do with the resolution that you might craft to the Corporation Commission as it relates to Lipsco and their day-to-day O and M and operations, if that's what we need to do. But I know the mayor's paid very, very close attention to this issue. I've come out there once, I've been paying attention to the issue. I think the rest of us have seen the communication, it's definitely one that's forefront, and definitely forefront in all of our minds. Last but not least, Mr. Red Bull, got a comment on 9A, pardon me, I jumped ahead. We'll get to that. All right. Anybody else have any comments from the floor? Sorry, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm working. Don't take the lack of action, so, you know, folks, about the Lipsco issues, unsympathetic, or lack of sympathy from the seven of us.
Mr. Red Bull, explain to the audience, that those are in a, what our procedures are relative to comments from the floor, that we cannot get involved.
Right. Yeah, we have three options, which is request to criticism, request that staff investigate and report on the matter, which I think we very much just did, and request that the matter be scheduled on a future agenda, which we just did as well. So that's why we limit our conversation when it comes specifically to any of you coming out to dialogue with us at particular, on any particular event.
You don't want to ignore you.
Yeah, definitely.
I don't think we were ignored at all.
Good. Okay. With that, I'll move to consent, unless there's any other comments from the floor. Clerk, you've got it.
Consent agenda, item A, ratify the city manager's action to support issuance of a notice to proceed for the Cotton Lane Bridge project. Item B, approve a request from John Salazar, representing JPG Enterprises LLC, for a Series 12 liquor license number 12076789 for Manuel's Mexican Food Restaurant, to be located at 13319 West McDowell Road. Item C, adopt Resolution 06-1075, authorizing the city manager and chief of police to execute an agreement between the city of Goodyear and the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office to participate in the Maricopa County Neighborhoods Narcotics Enforcement Team. Item D, adopt Resolution 06-1076, authorizing the city manager to execute an administrative services agreement with the ICMA Retirement Corporation to administer the Retirement Health Savings Plan. Item E, approve the condominium final plat for Wigwam Column Commons, subdividing approximately five acres into four commercial buildings, generally located at the northeast corner of Wigwam Boulevard and Indian School Road, within Phase 3B of the Palm Valley Planned Area Development District, subject to stipulations. Item F, approve the condominium final plat for Palm Valley Professional Plaza Phase 2, subdividing approximately 4.33 acres into seven office condominium buildings, generally located at the northwest corner of Litchfield Road and Thomas Road, in the Palm Valley Planned Area Development District, subject to stipulations. Item G, approve the map of dedication for King Ranch Phase 1 infrastructure, which includes major collectors and minor collectors. The proposed roadways will convey traffic throughout the King Ranch subdivisions, commercial parcels, and to the Estrella Parkway and Cotton Lane major arterials within the King Ranch Planned Area Development, generally located west of Cotton Lane, south of the Gila River, and east of Citrus Road. Item H, approve the map of dedication for Indian School Road, Sadea Parkway, and Campbell Avenue within the Sadea Planned Area Development, an approximately 638-acre development bounded by Camelback Road, Indian School Road, Perryville Road, and Citrus Road. Item I, adopt Resolution 1077 of the Mayor and Council of the City of Goodyear, Maricopa County, Arizona, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk and entitled "Subdivision Regulations, Chapter 15, Articles 15-2-4, 15-2-6, 15-4-4, and 15-4-6, and Flood Damage Prevention, Chapter 16, Article 16-7-4 of the City Code, dated September 2006, and providing for an effective date." Adopt Ordinance 061025, repealing Articles 15-2-4, 15-2-6, 15-4-4, and 15-4-6 of Chapter 15, and Article 16-7-4 of Chapter 16 of the Goodyear City Code, dated July 1984, as amended August 2005, adopting Articles 15-2-4, 15-2-6, 15-4-4, and 15-4-6 of Chapter 15, and Article 16-7-4 of Chapter 16 of the Goodyear City Code, dated September 2006, providing for separability and providing for an effective date. Item J, award a bid to ABI Lighting Signs and Electrical in the total amount of $132,312 to fabricate and install six monument signs and 16 sculpture signs within City Rights of Way. Item K, approve contract between City of Goodyear and Thunderbird Balloon and Air Classic LLC for title sponsorship of 2006 Goodyear Balloon and Air Spectacular for the amount of $175,000, made up of $140,000 cash and $35,000 in kind public safety services. Item L, approve the final plat subdividing 109.6 acres into 293 single-family residential units in the Amber Meadows Planned Area Development Zoning District, located east of Perryville Road, south of the Roosevelt Irrigation District Canal, and north of the future Harrison Road alignment, subdivided. Road alignment, subject to stipulations. Item N, adopt resolution 06-1081 of the mayor and council of the city of Goodyear, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the mayor of Goodyear to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the county of Maricopa for improvements to MC85. Item N, accept the right-of-way dedications for a portion of McDowell Road and Pebble Creek Parkway along the frontage of the Goodyear Center Point Development, generally located at the southeast corner of McDowell Road and Pebble Creek Parkway. Item O, accept the right-of-way dedication for a portion of McDowell Road along the frontage of the market at Australia Falls, generally located at the northeast corner of McDowell Road and Pebble Creek Parkway. Item P, adopt resolution 06-1078 declaring certain public right-of-ways to be unnecessary for public purposes and vacating certain public right-of-ways. Item Q, adopt resolution 06-1080 of the mayor and council of the city of Goodyear, Maricopa County, Arizona, adopting a second amendment to the Goodyear-King Ranch Development Agreement, EP the King LLC.
Anyone from the public wish to remove an item from consent agenda? Hearing none. Anybody on council wish to remove an item from consent? That, I'd ask for a motion for items 8A through Q.
I move to accept amendments A through Q as read by the city clerk.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Lord and a second by Councilmember Scott. Roll call vote, please.
Did we get to have any discussion at all about any of these?
If you'd like to have a discussion about, do you have just a question about one?
Well, I was going to bring up number E.
Letter E?
I'm going to check.
Is it just a question that we can field from the floor briefly?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Holland, you've got the floor.
This is a question for Kato, if he's around. Didn't already, there he is.
Kato.
I talked to you a little bit earlier about this and I thought the rest of the council might want to hear this. I didn't see anything talked about the traffic signal in the material that I looked at, but you told me that you were taking care of that.
Yes, Mayor, council members, we issued a, for this location, a traffic study to one of our on-call interim consultants last week. We expect the study to be completed in about five weeks.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Good information to know. There's a follow-up from the previous meeting and discussion about that item. Roll call vote for motion on force approval of items 8A through Q.
Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Mayor Antoniak.
Aye.
Yes, is 5-0.
On the business, item 9A. Now Harvey, I think you've got the floor.
I'm sorry, I missed, I missed first on this agenda.
So I would never publicly blame Councilmember Lord for my lack of attention to...
Councilmember Antoniak, members of the council, members of the public, I'm pleased tonight to present the Goodyear City Center Specific Area Plan for adoption, for consideration adoption this evening. But before I give you a brief overview of the plan, I'd like to recognize the many folks that have contributed to the success of this plan. It's, just very briefly, this plan, the genesis for this plan started in the mid-1980s and I believe probably the only one around here that was here then was Stephen Cleveland and had a lot to do with it, our city manager. And it's gone through quite a scrutiny over the years. We have now, I think there was a community vision that started in the mid-'80s of a city center. And we're now at a point where at least we have an agreement on a plan that the property owners can live with that I think brings that vision into fruition. So I'm really pleased about it. I'd also first, I'd like to thank the mayor and council for the opportunity to work on this project. This has been an exciting project just from a planning perspective. This is a really good opportunity for a professional to work on a plan like this. So very pleased with that. So we had a technical advisory committee that served to give advice to our consultant, HDR, as well as the city staff. And I'd like to recognize each member, we have a small token of appreciation, we have a little plaque with the actual city center land use plan embossed in the plaque. And Mario is going to assist me in giving these plaques out to the individual members of the tack, as well as the city council, staff members and others that have made a contribution to the plan. First, I'd like to start off with our chairperson, Georgia Lord. She started this process, she wasn't on the city council, but she is obviously now on the city council, but she has been one of the main driving forces that, behind the plan. She's kept the staff in line and she has persevered through the process and kept our meetings focused and kept staff and the consultant focused. So thank you very much, Georgia, for all your contributions. So, did you want to say a few words?
Sure. Okay.
I'm nervous about a few words to say. It looks different from here. Mayor, city council. The vision, as Harvey said, was from 1988 and it's finally becoming a reality and it calls for remembering all the past and present mayors and councils and staffers and citizens who played a very significant role in perpetuating this vision. So it's not just us, it's accumulation since 1988. And there's some on my committee that were around on the council at that time. So congratulations to them. A special recommendation to our city manager, Stephen Cleveland, who doesn't look that old, but I guess you are if you've been around since 1988, but he's nurtured the vision throughout its conception. And my thanks to the committee for their energy, their creativity, and their patience for serving an extended period of time while serving on this committee. And Harvey, is this the longest running committee we've ever had? I think two years, is this the longest?
General plan. I might rival with you.
Oh, general plan, okay. Well, I wasn't on that. And my gratitude for all the assistance from my co-chairman, Jamie Cavalier, who is in, I believe, Vienna, is that where she is? So I'll have to give her a hug when she gets back. My thanks to our great city staff for all their extra hours spent on honoring my request. And I will have to tell you, I think I will take this trophy as the most demanding chairman of any committee the city has ever had. And forgive me for some of my persistence sometimes when it was at the detriment of the staff. And I extend my appreciation to our consultants for their expertise and their good sense of humor and the long hours. Leslie Dornfield, Mike Labanca, David Moreno of Design Phi, and of course to our developers, Sen NP and Rosewood LLC. Thank you. It's all yours, honey.
Without further ado, I'll name the other, there were 28 committee members, as Georgia said, Jamie Cavalier is jettisoned around with our vice mayor at this time, so she's not here. Fred Amateur, is he here?
We will mail these out.
I will mail. Fred Amateur, Irene Gary, Irene in?
I'm here.
Gabriel Bay, I know is here. Gabriel Bay. She's not here. John Chopus, I don't think I saw John.
No, he's not here.
Oh, John's here, okay. He's on the side of the room.
Remember, no lawsuits from Huggie. I just want everybody to know that right now.
Harold Coleman, Harold Coleman. Jennifer De La Graza.
Jennifer is down in the area.
Oh, okay. Barney Helmick, Helmick. Are you here? Airport.
And for those of you that don't know, these are PD's airport representatives.
Is Margaret Horseman here? Margaret's not here. Paula Lardo, I know Paula's here.
And before this, I want you to know this, this is really pretty, Jenny and Paula and I said I might give some kind of small gift to each of the committee members and you came up with this and I think it's terribly impressive.
Sherry Laurentano, planning commission member. John Leach, former city council member. Sue Lenny's here, I see her. Oh, Laura? Sue Lenny, a former city council member.
There you go, she's our past city council person, so she certainly was active in, before the committee and during the committee.
There's Harold.
You know, Harold shows up in all meetings. He's like planning and zoning and security.
For many days long.
That's right. This is a 1988, not years.
Yeah.
Steve and I.
Barney in? Julie Richard, Julie back there.
Julie, thank you for rearranging your schedule tonight. It's okay.
There's Les.
The other one's been around for a while.
Les Stafford. Todd Tupper's here.
This is my first experience working with a land developer. And when we first start working, you don't say much. You go meeting after meeting, as long as you talk, are you ever going to talk, are you ever going to tell me? So eventually you really surprise me and get very horrible. But it was all part of it and I really appreciate your cooperation and I think this is going to go down in the books of, you know, Goodyear, that developers can come together in consensus and develop as much as they can.
How about Ken Wood? Keep looking to the left.
But Ken is very special, you all know, because I don't know if you know Ken's homestead, but his house, his family's home sits out on Stowe Parkway. And some of his family's land is going to the Garden Stadium, the Garden City Center. And so it was just great having, such a great heritage on my commitment and such a good place to live.
He had a fire country partnership committee. And that completes the 28 members. We also have staff and mayor and council we'd like to give plaques to. Obviously, the mayor's not here this evening and the vice mayor's not here. Brenda Holland is here. And...
What fun.
Make us all laugh. Rob Antoniak are... Do I have to walk around? Acting, acting air.
All I can get is this thing.
Last but not least, Exousa. Jump over. Jump over.
Congressman Sousa is really an advocate of the city center. Behind the scenes, he's always touching me and saying, "Okay, what is it going to happen? What is it going to happen?" God bless him, you were in tonight, talking about being at the city center, the city hall. So I really appreciate it, all right? And I'm looking forward to continuing that attitude so that we, you and I will be able to have a show.
Then a couple of, several staff members were instrumental, obviously, city manager, Stephen Cleveland, providing the support we needed to complete the city center.
Maybe you don't have a cane to deal with this?
He's only a year older than I am, so he's... And Joe Brooks, she's not here this evening.
And just for Joe, Joe's been so great on the staff. He's been like two males and all, and then it's always a great deal of work and I really, I really appreciate his support.
And Brett Birmingham is here. He helped.
Well, see, Brett was here and then he was here.
And he laughed.
And then he came back. And he went on to the civilian community. So we had him at the beginning and then he abandoned me and then all of a sudden he disappeared. So I really appreciate it.
Obviously, one other individual, they used to be on the staff, that's in New Mexico now, and I know he occasionally watches these meetings, so maybe if you're watching, Joe, thank you, Joe Schmitz, for your contribution. So he helped me through this process for about a year or so. Joe, thank you. And I believe that's, I think that's it, except for myself, obviously.
Harvey, this doesn't mean I'm not going to keep popping in your office all the time, so, okay? Come on, we're very fit. Harvey, thanks.
Eddie, if I could have the PowerPoint here, get the slides here. So with that, I will provide you an overview of the city center specific plan. There were four steps in the planning process. The first, during the first four months of the process, we collected data, we conducted an economic study, we did benchmarking, benchmark analysis, looked at other city centers. Harvey? Yes? I'm going to open the public hearing, I'm sorry. Open the public hearing, go ahead. Formal process, sorry. Thank you. We did benchmark analysis and we held a charrette. It was a desert edge high school. It was, I believe it was like a two and a half day process. We had excellent participation throughout the community on the charrette. And then the alternatives were generated, so we had place, we did placemaking and visual preference at this charrette. And then we, from that charrette, we did, alternatives were generated. There were three alternative plans that were generated and reviewed by the public. We actually did a citywide flyer and the flyer actually went on every house in Goodyear, notifying individuals of the public, open house. notifying individuals of the public, open house, where the three alternatives were reviewed by the public, and we had over 100 people at one of our public meetings, which, at City Hall, which I'm surprised that the fire department didn't close us down for that, we had that room packed. And then a recommended plan was proposed in the fall of 2005. We spent most of the winter and spring of 2006 refining the plan and created the document and subjected it to numerous reviews, primarily by the two stakeholder, primary stakeholders, Sun &amp; P, which owns 140 acres of the 200 acres, and Wood, the Wood family, represented by Rose Southwest. And that brings me to the next slide. These were the formal meetings that were held, and I won't go through all these, but there were numerous meetings of the Technical Advisory Committee, as you've seen, they put a lot of time and effort, we had numerous meetings with Sun &amp; P and representative of the Woods family. So the process started, it really, in January of 2004, when we hired, we went through an RFQ, and we had six or seven excellent proposals from qualified consultants and selected a consulting team composed of HDR and some subconsultants, and I failed in my thank yous to also thank the, to consult, two consultants who worked primarily on this from HDR, they did an excellent job, kept us on target, helped us a great deal, was Leslie Dornfeld and Michael La Bianca, so if you could give them a round of applause. They were tremendous help. The, this is the City Center, obviously the intersection of Yuma and Estrella Parkway, Goodyear Boulevard is the outer ring road, three, ultimately be a three-lane roadway, and then the main street loop is the interior roadway. The four, the City Center is divided into four quadrants, and I'll just very briefly go with this. The northwest quadrant is the 40 acres that the city owns, and that design theme is sun and shade for that one, primarily civic and retail and office uses, community space in that quadrant. Obviously, the city also owns 100 acres just to the north of Goodyear Boulevard, that will be integrated into that. The northeast district, the design theme is wind, taking advantage of the southwest prevailing winds, and primary land use is hotel, retail, and office. The southwest district is primarily residential, and water is the primary focus point, primarily on open space, and that doesn't mean that there won't be water in other districts, that is just the focal point of the open space in that particular district. And then last, this is southeast district, where you have the rock and vegetation that is native to the area, would be the design elements that would be expected in the architecture in that particular district. And that's primarily a business park and office environment. And all four districts are connected by a arroyo that would be a green space that would, that would provide the pedestrian connectivity between the four quadrants. And this is the plan. And the plan, just briefly, is, it doesn't, there was comments at one of our public hearings at the Planning Commission, where is the, where's the library, where's the senior citizen center? But this plan, it just gives you general land use configuration, it doesn't get into the details of site planning, where the City Hall is, where the library is, where the, where the other facilities that would go in the northwest quadrant, or the private sector. In the case of the city, and we can go into that later, we're about ready to initiate a process to do some specific site planning, so we can build some city facilities in the northwest quadrant. And Sun &amp; P you'll hear from in a few minutes, they're ready, they've submitted, they're ready to submit zoning documents to do, proceed with development in their quadrants, and this will be the basis for evaluating those zoning proposals. What the, what the plan shows is basically land use configuration, as well as the text in the document provides for regulatory tools to implement the plan, as well as design and building standards. The approximate square footage, and this would depend a lot on building heights and other factors, is about 1.7 million square feet, with about 6,500 parking spaces. Of course, there's a lot of factors that vary, but this is an estimate of what we believe that it can be built in the city center area. There's some key elements. The plan, we look at the plan in two different, really, two different ways, there's the core, which is inside the main street loop, that's where most of the regulatory elements of the plan are. And then the outer, outside the, the main street, out to Goodyear Boulevard, the outer loop, is, is general land use patterns, there are some regulatory elements, but it's, it's a little, it's a lot looser, just as long as it conforms with the, with the city center core. And these are some key elements that are being addressed in the plan, on your left hand, or my left-hand side. And I failed to mention that in the, in the core area, the, the building height maximum is 150 feet. Outside the core, it is 78 feet, except for in the southwest quadrant, where you, along the Goodyear Boulevard, where you abut existing residential, the height limit would go to 48 feet. The reason for that is, we visioned that the center of the core would be the highest buildings, and it would, there'd be a gradation out, out towards, as you go in each direction. The key land use principles. One of the, one of the regulatory elements in the plan, by the, everything that's underlined in the plan means that it's regulatory, if it's not underlined, then it's not regulatory, if, those other items are encouraged, but not mandatory. So one of the regulatory elements is that no drive-through facilities, what, what the vision is, is this would be a pedestrian-friendly environment, and drive-through, drive-through restaurants, drive-through banks are not pedestrian-friendly. We have numerous opportunities for drive-throughs outside the Goodyear, Goodyear Boulevard area, both east and west, or north and south. There are shared parking solutions are recommended, we don't want to create seas of parking, we want to take advantage of opportunities to share parking between different comparable uses. The buildings within the main street loop must be focused around public open space. One of the other elements is to preserve the views of the Estrella Mountains is encouraged. At one point during the plan, we made it mandatory that we had to maintain a view corridor, and we backed off from that, it was just too hard to implement, but we do encourage to preserve the views of the Estrella Mountains. The arroyo already mentioned will incorporate a multi-use path that will connect the four districts. Lastly, another key point is that buildings along the main street loop are mandated to be at least two to three stories in height. That's the minimum. Traditional suburban development be one story, we want two to three stories along the main street loop, moving the buildings closer to the street. Before I get into Q and A, one of the other, we did have some, at the Planning Commission public hearings, we had two public hearings at the Planning Commission. At the first public hearing, we did have some comments from Sun &amp; P, Todd Tupper, we've addressed those. He felt the amendment, this was in July, that the amendment process was too restrictive, too cumbersome, and we changed it somewhat, made it a little more flexible. He also expressed concern on exempting the Wood property from the plan if a, if a baseball spring training facility is proposed, and how that would impact Sun &amp; P's property. Excuse me. Drink some water here. To address this issue, but we have a general policy that if the, if the stadium is, finally becomes a reality in, on the Wood property, then there'd be, the council and the commission would entertain land use changes around the, around the stadium on Sun &amp; P's property to better integrate the baseball with the adjacent uses. So there's some policy direction on that. And then in another public hearing in August, on August 2nd, we heard from a gentleman that objected to the 150-foot height limit, or allowance, within the city, within the main street loop, felt that that was too high, felt that we should limit it to no more than four stories. And we had an extensive discussion at the Planning Commission and the public on building height, and there was definite support among the Planning Commission that the height was important. The height is important for a number of reasons, I'll go over a few of those, since it was an issue at the Planning Commission. The height is needed to create synergy in a downtown area, you can get more activity if you go up. First, it creates more, easier to create a pedestrian environment when you have higher buildings. We're also faced, and the development community can attest to this, increasing cost in land and infrastructure costs, so just out of economy of scale, we need to go up, look at going up instead of going out all the time, so there's some economic reasons why it makes sense to maximize land use for, for economic reasons. To mitigate the impact of the taller buildings to adjacent areas, the building heights are highest in the main street loop, and as I indicated, they decrease towards the edge of the city center to provide the transition between the existing and planned developments adjacent to the city center. Further, the rights of way for the main street loop and the Goodyear Boulevard are, are very wide, the streets may not be wide, but the, the right of way is wide, so you will have a great deal of ability not to create too much shade on the street, and so that will help mitigate the, the height issue. So buildings will be stepped back to lessen the impact of height along the street. So with that said, the commission voted five to zero to recommend adoption of the City Center specific area plan, and there were modifications, there was, there was a lengthy, or about 180 comments in a matrix, that they, we incorporated into this document. So since this document was published, however, we have also got a, an email from Mr. Tupper, who had about 12 clarifications, and they're not of substantive, they're not substantive issues, but they will be clarified between the, hopefully, adoption this evening and the publication at a later date. So with that said, this is a public hearing, and I believe you have one individual that would like to speak.
Mr. Ed Bull.
Thank you, Ed Bull, 702 East Osborne, representing Sun &amp; P. We request your approval of this specific area plan. It's been in the process a long time, as you all know. I think Councilmember Lord and I have teased each other along the way about Todd finding religion somewhere along the way, and I guess you kind of alluded to that earlier tonight. But it's something that goes back many, many, many years, and certainly the efforts of the last couple of years have brought this to the, to the forefront with considerable focus with this, with this book in front of you tonight. We do request your council's approval in accordance with Harvey's presentation. As you know, and as Harvey mentioned, Sun &amp; P owns the southwest corner, the southwest quadrant, the northeast quadrant, and most of the southeast quadrant of the four quadrants that make up the city center. All total 140 acres, plus or minus gross. Sun &amp; P is anxious to have the plan adopted, and they're not dilly-dallying, and as Harvey mentioned, Sun &amp; P has been working on our P A Ds, in fact, this is one of three sets of the books that we filed with a P A D application, that were filed last week, with the P A D book, one for each of the quadrants, with parking, with traffic, with water, with sewer, with other kinds of things, all being in that package. We filed one set for each of the three quadrants, because it's three separate P A Ds, we look forward to staff's review and to bringing that back through your Planning Commission and City Council processes as expeditiously as schedules allow. As you know, the city, the landowners, the community, all of us are heavily invested in the success of this plan. I don't think there's anyone in this room who has any desire other than this plan to be very successful, and that it allows development to occur, and that it be good, viable development, both short-term and long-term. As a part of this plan, over the course of many months of discussions, Sun &amp; P began to trust and learned to trust staff and TAC and the consultants and others, as we were talking about some of these unusual, if not unique, regulations that are included in the specific ser, area plan. Things that, that we learned to trust the staff and consultants as being important to help implement the vision that the community and TAC and staff, the consultants had for the city center. Things that we hoped worked and worked well, in order to make sure that this development occurs, and occurs timely and in a viable manner, and so on. I know, standing here tonight, we all hope and believe that this is a perfect plan, just like every plan is a perfect plan on the day that's adopted, and we hope that every one of these regulations and restrictions work and work well, and that's great. We would ask, however, that, that the city, in conjunction with not only yourselves and staff, but with Sun &amp; P and the Wood family and so on, take a look at this plan regularly, every year or so, to see what's working, see what's not working, see what we need to fine-tune in order to make this a successful plan. The world will continue to evolve, this corridor will continue to evolve, as will the city center area itself, there will be new ideas, some good, not so good, let's look at them ideally annually, and keep polishing this plan so that the city center really turns into an implementation of the dream and the vision that, that the city has. But that, if you have questions, we'll try to answer them, otherwise, we request your approval.
Is there any other public comment during the public hearing? With that, I'll close the public hearing, ask the clerk to read the title, or read the ordinance by title only, please.
Ordinance 06-1026, approving the Goodyear City Center Specific Area Plan dated September 25th, 2006, providing for regulatory land use, infrastructure and design standards, and the development of all properties located within the boundaries of the existing and planned Goodyear Boulevard, which encompasses approximately 200 acres around the intersection of Yuma Road and Estrella Parkway, providing certability and providing for an effective date.
With that, I'll ask if Councilmember Lord has a motion to adopt ordinance 06-1026, as read by the clerk.
Thank you for the honor. I move we adopt ordinance as read by the city clerk for the Goodyear City Center Specific Area Plan.
And I'll second that. Got a motion to adopt ordinance 06-1026 from Councilmember Lord, seconded by Councilmember Sousa. Counsel, have any discussion, I'll lead off with Councilmember Lord, if she'd like to lead us off in this discussion.
I think I've said enough this evening, I'm going to pass it on, thank you.
Councilmember Sousa.
You know, I've been at you for two days. And what you've done here over the last two years is a vision that I've always had for the city. A center that we can point with pride to. And I can do that without reservation by what you've given us here. And Harvey, I, I, I know that the pride that you, that you have about being involved in this project, you could, I could sense that as you made your presentation before the council this evening, and I congratulate you for that. I congratulate all of you who participated in this project, and I'm happy to be a part of it, and I can assure you that I will be one of the council members that pushes this to fruition. God will.
Thank you, Mr. Eric. Councilmember Holland.
I think we're just excited about it, and we're finally seeing some real evidence that it's moving forward, and, and Georgia, we're really proud, and Harvey, and all of you guys have put a lot of time and effort into it, and I'm glad to play a small part in that, thank you.
No comment, except I think we've got enough talking, let's just get the ordinance passed.
Where's the trial of this amount?
With that said, you know, having sat on one of the... With that said, you know, having sat on one of the—I don't know whether it was the longest or second longest, I'm sure it's up for debate, but the—between the general plan and the city center, those have been two very monumental tasks that our Community Development Department have undertaken over the last several years. And so congratulations to the staff and the technical staff that was hired from outside to assist that along as well, HDR and Design 5, right? Did I say that right? And everybody else that worked on it. There's definitely a lot of heart and soul that goes into these matters from the residents and from the community members, and look forward to seeing that come to fruition over the next several years. And I'm sure we'll take our first steps towards the city center this week. Councilmember Lord, congratulations. You've had a great effort. With that, I'll ask the clerk to do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Mayor Antoniak.
Aye.
Pass this five-zero.
Congratulations. With that, I will move to the next four items. Unless there's going to be a big vacuum here when people leave, I'll—feel free, those of you that did come for a specific item this evening, don't hesitate to get up and get back to your families and go about your business, but don't be embarrassed to do so. With that, the next four items are all related to King Ranch. Brett Burningham will be the presenter on all four of those, and council will take then take four separate actions. The items are a major amendment to King Ranch final PAD and three final plots. Mr. Burningham, you've got the floor.
Members of the council, members of the public, King Ranch is generally located south of the Gila River, west of Estrella Parkway, and north of Estrella Mountain Ranch. I'll put up a city map for everyone. Okay, I've placed two land use plan exhibits for you. The top one here is the current King Ranch land use plan. The one on the bottom is—contains the proposed amendments, so that you can see—you can see both of the affected areas. There are three main changes that are associated with this PAD amendment, and I want to—I'm going to go through each of those briefly with you and point those out on the land use plan. The PAD amendment request first includes the request to realign Estrella Parkway, as it enters King Ranch, and add a 12.6-acre medium-high-density parcel on the east side of the realigned Estrella Parkway. In this exhibit here, you can see the current Estrella Parkway alignment, and then you can see the change down here. You can see the realignment here, thereby creating a 12.6-acre medium-high-density parcel that's shown in brown. The second—the second element of the PAD amendment is to reconfigure the size and shape of the commercial parcels adjacent to Cotton Lane and east of Estrella Parkway, and to adjust the size and shape of the residential parcels in the vicinity of the reshaped commercial parcels. So you can see these commercial parcels here. You can then see the change there. The third item that this amendment seeks to revise is to specify that residential lofts are permitted use in commercial areas on floors above the—on—in commercial areas above the first floor. And I want to go back to the realignment of Estrella Parkway and provide a brief background. As the council is aware, since the approval of the King Ranch final PAD, the city's been working on traffic circulation in the larger area. And the city has made a series of suggestions to the developer of King Ranch to allow for a safer and more efficient roadway design for Estrella Parkway. And the city believes the realignment of Estrella Parkway through King Ranch will significantly improve projected traffic operations for Estrella Parkway in the future. The effect of realigning the roadway obviously creates a 12-acre parcel, and the—due to the size and shape of the parcel and its proximity to a major arterial roadway, the applicant desires that it maintain a medium-high-density residential designation. And staff understands that this is not a good area for low-density, single-family residential. It's too small, it's impacted by a major roadway. The parcel is also adjacent to—to a proposed—this area right here, there is a proposed rezoning for a resort hotel land use, and staff believes that a medium-high-density residential designation would complement that type of future land use. It's more compatible with that as opposed to a single-family residential land use. Associated with this new designation, this brown area that you see on this plan, this is a new designation in King Ranch, so the applicant had to formulate a new set of development standards for this particular parcel to be included with the King Ranch PAD. Associated with that, the applicant wanted to provide a minor change in the open space requirements that would be provided for that site. Goodyear's multifamily MF-18 zoning district requires 400 square feet of recreational open space per unit in the MF-18 zoning district. The applicant is proposing to deviate from this standard, and the applicant is proposing a standard of 300 square feet of recreational open space per unit. The applicant has reviewed open space standards in other valley cities and compared them to Goodyear's. The applicant noted Phoenix, Peoria, Tempe, Chandler, and Surprise requirements. The applicant noted that Goodyear's standards are well above the aforementioned municipalities, and the applicant does not believe that reducing that standard to 300 square feet would detract from the quality of that future development. Staff and the Planning Commission have accepted this request. Staff is mainly concerned about making sure that the open space is usable for the future After the property's been zoned and then sold off to a developer, it's much more difficult for staff to ensure that there's going to be usable open space for the future residents. As such, the applicant has agreed that the 300 square feet per unit standard will include usable recreational open space, and that is stipulated in number five in your staff Now, if I could focus more on the commercial component of the land use plans, the areas in red that you see, again, the top plan is the current King Ranch plan. The bottom—the lower plan is the proposed. As the council may recall, during the King Ranch rezoning process, several members of the Planning Commission and the City Council noted that the commercial areas near Cotton Lane should extend further down to the southern bank of the Gila River to maximize the potential of this setting, and would also make the commercial areas a lot more marketable. So this PAD amendment seeks to revise the commercial parcels by increasing the amount of roadway frontage along Cotton Lane. And obviously, associated with that, if the commercial areas are being tweaked, the adjacent residential areas are also being reconfigured accordingly. The PAD amendment may result in an increase of approximately 350 additional units in King Ranch. That would equate to an approximately 9% increase. The request is still consistent with the intent and the approval of the final PAD for King Ranch. It's still consistent with the city's general plan and the land use designations for King Ranch. The number of units being added to the project is still within the number of units originally analyzed for water and sewer needs for the overall King Ranch project. The final element that this PAD seeks to revise is associated with residential lofts being permitted use in commercial zoning areas, zoning districts. And given that the commercial areas are—they're meant to be mixed-use activity centers, staff is supportive of allowing residential dwelling units in commercial parcels. Staff has added a stipulation, number four, to restrict residential dwelling units on the first floor in commercial areas in an effort to ensure that the commercial land uses will not be allowed to be increased and/or converted to residential land uses in the future. There was a citizen review meeting held for this PAD amendment on June 28th, 2006. There were three residents who attended the meeting. However, there was no opposition to the proposed PAD amendment. The Planning and Zoning Commission have forwarded a recommendation for approval, subject to the eight stipulations outlined in your staff report. This concludes the presentation by staff. Staff is available to answer any questions that you might have. Mr. Steve Earl is also available on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Burningham. Mr. Earl, do you have anything you want to add?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'll be very brief. The reason for this amendment, the principal motivation behind this amendment was really twofold. The two suggestions that we heard at the time this was approved a year ago as a final PAD, there was a concern in the alignment of Estrella Parkway. It does have currently a fairly significant bend in the road, and we were asked to try and work with staff to ease that bend, make it a more gentle alignment. The second thing that came up was, as just mentioned by Brett, we had not brought the commercial down to the river. We were separated. We brought residential around, and the comment both from the commission and the council was, why are we not enjoying commercial use, restaurants and retail, right on the banks of what we're creating as open space? So you can see that in making the change here on the bottom, which I'll just kind of bring up, we brought the commercial down and we introduced a kind of permanent water feature. So even when water's not in the river, there will be water adjacent to this commercial overlooking that. Another change which may not have been directly noticeable is that we have this townhouse project, but in the before condition, it did not have a presence on the road. It was separated and behind the commercial. By increasing the commercial here, we were able to bring that down and create a presence of residential at that intersection, which will strongly increase its marketability as a townhouse project. So that was—the those are the changes here. And over here, you can see that the curve of the road was a fairly sharp turn. Now it is a very gentle sloping element, and we are introducing traffic circles at the three points of intersection with the surrounding properties. Now, by doing—by creating that, we of course put property outside or on the east side of the road. As staff has indicated, we felt that wasn't a real good place for single-family residential and 12 acres separated, but it placed a great opportunity for kind of a town—high-density townhouse condominium project, so that we could actually introduce people into this project that did not have to pay the kind of housing costs that we're going to end up being throughout the rest of King Ranch. Still very high design, still beautiful units, but an opportunity to be in it. Now, it is true, we asked for a reduction in the overall open space largely because these people who live here will be a part of the entire community that has extensive open space, and the clubhouse alone is over 10,000—so 13,000 square feet clubhouse, in addition to the parks and trails that are already a part of it. So we felt that we could introduce beautiful open space in that project at 300 square feet per person. And so those are the changes, and we of course accept all the stipulations proposed by staff and the commission. Glad to respond to any other questions that I haven't covered.
If you'll just remain, and we'll—yeah, we'll get on with the ordinance and motion. Any other comments from the public? I'll be right back with you, Mr. Earl, if there are any questions. Okay, seeing no questions or any other comments from the public, I'd ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Mayor, before I read the ordinance, I'd like to point out that there's a typo on item E. The recommendation needs to say unit three, not unit one.
On item E, as an echo? Needs to say unit—
Three.
Three, not unit one? I have phase one, unit three in my memo. Okay.
Ordinance 06-1027, approving a planned area development amendment to approve the first major amendment to the King Ranch final PAD, to reconfigure the commercial parcels as they relate to the Gila River and Cotton Lane, and to adjust the residential land use types adjacent to the reconfigured commercial areas, to realign Estrella Parkway as it enters King Ranch, and add one 12.6-acre medium-high-density residential parcel on the east side of the realigned Estrella Parkway, and to allow commercial parcels to contain residential dwelling units above the first floor, to provide for the change in zoning, provide separability, and providing for an effective date.
With that, I'd ask for a motion.
Motion to accept ordinance 2006-1027, as read by the clerk.
Okay.
Got a motion by Councilmember Scott and a second by Councilmember Holland for ordinance 06-1027, as read by the clerk. Discussion. No discussion over here. Councilmember Lord, Councilmember Sousa? No discussion. Good deal. I have one question. The realignment of Estrella Parkway, when can we anticipate that occurring, or what—in terms of timing?
To the applicant, the question is about the realignment, and I believe—correct me if I'm wrong—that was at least in phase two?
Right.
If not sooner?
Yeah. Initially, in the PAD, it was a part of unit three, but it being brought forward to unit two, sooner than later. Obviously, the first, if you remember, Cotton Lane is our major focal point into this project and the bridge, but the realignment of Estrella Parkway is now being brought forward.
I would just ask staff to be sensitive of ingress and egress out of the southern area of Goodyear, and just be sensitive to, let's get one on board and roll with one and get that underway, and then get underway on the second one rather than have, you know, complete chaos moving south.
Mr. Mayor, that's why the intent is to have Cotton Lane constructed with the bridge in the next year and a half, and then we would be coming back in phase two, which is about three to five years—two years, two to three years later. So we will have enough capacity on Cotton Lane so that people will not be forced to endure the realignment. They'll have alternatives.
With that, thank you for taking into consideration the realignment and coming back to us with that. I've traveled that route for five years, day in and day out, five, six, seven days a week, and it definitely is an area that our police chief has seen many times in his years, as well as the rest of his squad and the fire departments. There were plenty of wrecks down there in that little area, so definitely will be much safer environment. With that, ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Mayor Antoniak.
Aye.
Pass this five-zero.
We're going to add a 9C.
9C here.
Brett, did you have another presentation for 9C, or did you want us to—
I can make it really quick.
Okay. Take it away.
Mayor, members of the council, typically, final plots are placed on the consent agenda, as you know. In this case, the PAD amendment impacted a few of the final plots. I just wanted to note for the record that the City Council approved a preliminary plat for King Ranch Phase One on August 22nd, 2005. There are three final plots before you tonight. Phase One, Unit One, is 283 acres, 715 locks, and 27 tracks. The overall residential density is 2.8 dwelling units per acre, and the total amount of O— The overall residential density is 2.8 dwelling units per acre, and the total amount of open space in this area is 56 acres or 20 percent of the area. Phase One, Unit Two is 327 acres, 606 lots and 72 tracks. The overall density for this plat is 2.8 dwelling units per acre. The total open space is 106 acres or 32 percent. Phase One, Unit Three is 313 acres, 110 lots, 26 tracks. The density is 2.5 dwelling units per acre. The total open space in Unit Three is 105 acres or 34 percent. There's a lot of open space in those plots. Wanted to note that the lot size, the density, the open space, everything is in compliance with the King Ranch PAD and also with the preliminary plat that was recently approved. That concludes the presentation by staff.
So any comments from the public on item 9C? No public comments from the floor? Ask for a motion to approve. Go ahead.
Motion to accept final plat for King Ranch Phase One, Unit One, subdividing 283 acres into 715 lots and 27 tracks, generally located south of the Healer River, east of the Citrus Road alignment, west of Estrella Parkway, and north of Estrella Mountain Ranch within the King Ranch planned area development.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Scott and a second by Councilmember Holland. Say there any discussion? No discussion, I call for a vote. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Five zero, the ayes have it. Item 9D. We're good. No staff presentation, any comments from the public on item 9D? Seen no comments from the public? I'd ask for a motion.
Motion to accept final plat for King Ranch Phase One, Unit Two, subdividing 327 acres into 606 lots, 72 tracks, generally located south of the Healer River, east of Citrus Road alignment, west of Estrella Parkway, north of Estrella Mountain Ranch within the King Ranch planned area development.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Scott, a second by Councilmember Sousa. Any discussion? Seen no discussion, I'd ask for the vote. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, five to zero. Item 9E, final plat for King Ranch Phase One, Unit Three. Ask for comments from the public? No comments from the public? Ask for a motion from the council?
Motion to accept final plat for the King Ranch Phase One, Unit Three, subdividing 313 acres into 110 lots, 26 tracks, generally located south of the Healer River, east of Citrus Road alignment, west of Estrella Parkway, north of Estrella Mountain Ranch within the King Ranch planned area development.
Second.
Councilmember Scott in motion, second from Councilmember Lord. Any discussion? Seen no discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Five oh, ayes have it. Everybody doing okay?
Yeah.
Everybody else doing okay? Good deal. Moving on to 9F. Next two items, F and G are related, both related to Sun DS Farms. Applicant, thank you very much, by the way, for those last items. Harvey Kraus will have the presentation for both items together, and council then take two separate actions. The first is a general plan amendment resolution, and the second item is an ordinance to rezone 160 acres. Mr. Kraus, floor is yours.
Mayor, council, Stephen Creche couldn't be here. This is his case, and I'm filling in for him. Very briefly, this property is located at the southwest corner of Estrella Parkway and Lower Buckeye Road. It's bounded on the north by Lower Buckeye Road and south by Elwood Street. Alignment on the west is Cerebral Village, an existing single-family development, and to the north is Estrella Vista, which is an existing single-family development. South of Elwood is zoned heavy industrial. There's Arizona Galvanizing. There is a furniture manufacturer in this portion. In this section on the east side is a business park that is being developed into various uses with mostly light industrial and some commercial. On the east side is Estrella Parkway. The airport is located just to the east, and this is vacant ag land, which will be zoned as business park at a future date. The property in question, there's a little, just give you a little bit of a background, it's somewhat challenged in terms of development. Had a numerous general plan issues. It's impacted by the Phoenix Goodyear Airport, some policies that were adopted in the 2003 general plan. It also has, as you can see, it has existing residential neighbors on two sides, which obviously they are concerned about what goes there. So it had some challenges. So let me show you what was adopted in 2003. This is the, it's known as DS Farms. The light purple area is designated as industrial property. The yellow is residential, two to four dwelling units per acre. The, as you can see, the noise contour lines, unlike the Luke Air Force Base, the Phoenix Goodyear Airport uses 60 DNL, but for purposes of focusing on noise, this is the 65 DNL line, which just touches the corner, just barely touches the corner of this property. So it is impacted by a policy that was in the general plan that within, if you recall, the graduated density concept of within a half a mile of a noise contour line, the density should not exceed two dwelling units per acre. This is the property again. The property is 160 acres, and the developer has submitted a development plan after having several discussions with staff as well as the neighbors, adjoining neighbors. I also failed to mention that there's a high-intensity corridor, overlay corridor that runs up and down Estrella Parkway that impacts this property also, that designates high-volume transportation corridor for opportunities for intense retail and office development along this corridor. So the applicant is seeking rezoning of this property while at first seeking a general plan amendment of land uses to facilitate commercial, light industrial, and residential development on the property. I have his, there's 18, what he shows is 18 acres of community, commercial at the corner of Lower Buckeye Road and Estrella Parkway, which would be equivalent to C2 or general commercial uses. There's a band of light industrial wrapped around the property to buffer the heavier industrial to the south as well as the contemplated industrial development that, to the east of Estrella Parkway. And then we move into residential uses as you move further west and north to buffer the existing neighborhoods of the Cerebral Village and Estrella Vista. There is low to medium density of 31 acres as a buffer from the commercial and light industrial to the lower-density residential. And meeting, in the meetings with residents, they desire to have similar development on their borders with two to four dwelling units per acre, which is comparable to Estrella Vista, which is, and Cerebral Village, which is just over three units to an acre. One of the things that, in terms of policy, staff calculated, there is property that is going from industrial to residential. Approximately 53 acres in the general plan is being changed from industrial to residential. Normally, that usually raises concern in a number of quarters, and that's one of the major reasons we have a minor general plan amendment. If we had pursued the general plan as it was outlined in 2003, we would have had a situation where there'd been industrial that would virtually abut up to the existing residential development. That was very, that was a great concern to the residents, so we felt like a better transition was to have residential. We've been very aggressive in terms of all the notification requirements of future noise issues because this property is impacted by overflights. We have had meetings with officials from the Phoenix Goodyear Airport. Barney's in the audience shaking his head. And while they would just soon see raw land there and see no development, that's their brothers, just like we have with Luke Air Force Base. If there are certain property rights, I feel like a good compromise is reached here where we have residential to satisfy the neighbors and we have some commercial and industrial as a buffer to the airport. In terms of the policy of the graduated density, and this property is pretty much the only one that really was impacted by the graduated density because, as you may recall, that the city did not really codify the graduated density for Luke Air Force Base. It was really just codified for the Phoenix Goodyear Airport. So this is the only property that was impacted. So if we took the half mile to about here and we allowed two units to an acre, what we would get was about 300 and basically almost, we could get 320 units of residential in this area. And with the proposal, we have, using the medium to low density range, if you use the two to four and the four to six, if you use the midpoint, you're roughly over, you're over 300 units to an acre. Over 300 units, not over 300 units to acre. That would be, that's high. That would be up the street at the city center.
Harvey was getting excited. He was starting to clatter.
Yeah. I had a faux pas there. So in essence, the current zoning residential density, and if you look at the policy, if you apply it literally to this property, really not changing the number of dwelling units that you could possibly get on this property. So the neighbors have been informed of this. We've, I believe the applicant has done an excellent job in meeting with the neighbors, and they handed me petition. There's 63 of them in support of the rezoning, and they showed me a little map where they're located. So, I know it's hard to see that. There's the green, green color, it's stern, the green from the blue. The green signed the petition, there are 63 of them. The blue expressed verbal support but did not sign the petition. The red, there were three that were red located in this area. They were opposed to it. They would prefer to see just raw land. So they've done a good job of reaching out to the community and getting their support. So I believe that concludes my comments, and I'm available to answering questions. And I believe the applicants here represent, Ed Bull is representing the applicant on behalf of Todd Tupper.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Ask if there are any comments from the applicant.
Thank you, Ed Bull, 702 East Osborne, representing Sun DS Farms. We appreciate the Planning Commission's unanimous recommendation for approval. We appreciate staff's recommendation for approval. We appreciate the 86 neighbors who have either signed in support or verbally indicated their support. We accept all 55 of the stipulations in the zoning part of the staff report. As you know, this is a transitional property. You have good written reports. You had a complete presentation from Harvey. We're very pleased of the dialogue that took place with staff. We're very pleased with the interaction that we had with the neighbors because the interaction with the neighbors included not only dealing with appropriate land uses and transitions on this particular 160 acres, but we were also asked by those neighbors and did in fact step up with some traffic-related information that those neighbors can discuss with city staff concerning the current situation in their existing neighborhood. So we're here, very proud of where we've been and where we've come to. I think tonight is really a culmination of some prior discussions where your council, I believe, was really saying, look, let's figure out the details of this when somebody comes back with a PAD. The same people who were involved in this property for many, many, many years are still involved today through a joint venture with Sun MP. We are back with a PAD that I believe satisfies every request that's been made of us by staff and the neighbors, and it's one that if you'd like a full presentation from me, I can give it on either the general plan amendment or the PAD case, recognizing that the PAD is preliminary only, so you'll see it again when it comes back as a final PAD with preliminary plots and so on. As I said, if you want a full presentation, let me know. Otherwise, if you're happy, we're happy, and we request your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Bull. I will reserve the right to call you back up here in just a second after I get through number one card on this from Raylene Syro. Is that how, is that how I say the last name? Is that correct?
What was it?
Raylene Syro?
Syro.
If you don't mind, just name and address.
Yes, Raylene Syro. I'm 15646 West Hilton. I'm in the north end of Estrella Vista, and it was a very big concern of ours concerning the traffic that was going to come through 157. I worked with Bob and Robert, the consultants with the Planning Commission, and they made some changes for us to block out some of that additional traffic we were going to get. I've been on this, working with them since the beginning in June when we were involved and they came out and talked to us. And they've done a great job. They blocked off the areas I wanted blocked off. They've added some, you know, park, an additional bigger park area. They're going to do some lighting and some things for the kids out there. So it's just, the development, it looks really good, and we're really happy with it. You know, they've worked with us from the beginning, and they've listened to us, and we've had numerous meetings, and there's been a little bit of pushback, but we've been able to come to a decision and agree on a few things.
Thank you for coming up. Appreciate your comments. With that, does anybody desire to have a presentation by Mr. Bull? Do you want to get home tonight? I had to ask. I could have sounded a little bit more excited.
Just want to say, let's not make it personal. Presentation by Mr. Bull or anyone else?
Oh, true, yes. Mr. Bull or anyone else. Sure, he'll sleep better tonight. Ask the clerk to read the resolution 06-1079 by title only.
Resolution 06-1079, approving a minor amendment to the land use plan in the Goodyear General Plan 2003-2013, providing for land use designation changes to facilitate the rezoning and development of 160 acres known as the Sun DS Farms property, generally located at the southwest corner of Estrella Parkway and Lower Buckeye Road to include a mix of low-density residential, low-medium-density residential, community commercial, light industrial, and open-space land use designations and providing for an effective date.
Ask for a motion.
Motion to accept resolution 106-1079 is read by the clerk.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Scott, second by Councilmember Sousa. Any discussion with Councilmember Lord?
Yeah, I'd just like to complement the whole process, and I think the testimonial by Ms. Syro stating how well your comments were received by the developer and the city, that's an example we want to see happen over and over again. And I thank you for your citizen participation in this.
Councilmember Sousa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had concerns about voting yes for this resolution, but when Mr. Bull was up, making us comments about the Goodyear City Center, he pointed out that there is movement in Sun NMP property that is commercial-industrial in the vicinity of the airport, and that he's, they have moved this to the amendment stages. So consequently, what I see here in looking at the map that I have and the configuration, it's a well-buffered piece of property for residential, and of course, south of Elwood Road is an industrial property that we've voted on in the past. So you've got the light industrial and 13 acres of that, 35 acres that abut this, the Elwood industrial area. So it's a very good plan as I see it, and I will be voting for it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Scott, Holland. With that, thank you to the family and the property owners and applicant. I know it's been a, definitely an application process. I know it's been a, definitely an application process that's been lengthy, so appreciate your patience as we've gone. I know you were all at the general plan process, and here we are tonight. With that, I'll ask the clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Mayor Antoniak?
Aye.
Yes, it's 5-0.
Seeing that we don't necessarily have anything new to present on item G, I'll ask if there's any comments from the public on item G. Seen no comments, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance 06-1028, providing for conditional zoning of 160 acres of land from the agricultural urban district to the preliminary planned area development district, with development known as Sun DS Farms, generally located at the southwest corner of Estrella Parkway and Lower Buckeye Road, amending supplementary zoning map number 05-241 to provide for the change in zoning, providing separability, and providing for an effective date.
Ask for a motion.
Motion to accept.
Do I have a?
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Sousa, second from Councilmember Scott. Any discussion? Seen no discussion, I'll ask for the clerk to do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Mayor Antoniak?
Aye.
Yes, it's 5-0.
Everybody still? Thank you. Everybody still doing okay, or you want a five-minute break?
No, okay.
Okay, we've got three more items on the agenda, so we'll keep rolling. Item 9H. This item is to consider adoption of a resolution for a pre-funding and reimbursement agreement with Westcore Evergreen Devco and Grace Development. And Kim Bendon has the clerk.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity this evening to present to you. Tonight you'll be considering adopting resolution 06-1082, authorizing the city to enter into the pre-funding and reimbursement agreement concerning the payment of fees and costs pertaining to the design and construction of public infrastructure related to the McDowell Road Commercial Corridor. This agreement is among the City of Goodyear, Westcore, Evergreen Devco, and also WM Grace. The purpose of the pre-funding agreement is to provide a mechanism for some infrastructure improvements related to a portion of the roadway within the anticipated McDowell Road Commercial Corridor District. The specific area affected by this pre-funding agreement is Pebble Creek Parkway from I-10 to McDowell Road, McDowell Road from Pebble Creek Parkway to the anticipated Bullard Wash Channel, and also the detour road on McDowell Road at the Bullard Wash Channel area. The purpose of the pre-funding agreement is to establish this funding mechanism for these improvements earlier than the anticipated improvement district bond availability. And I want to stress this point, is the timing is critical to align the construction with the timeframes associated with the Goodyear Center Point, as well as the Westcore Power Center developments that are in this area. Finally, this establishes a pre-funding agreement, the pre-funding, reimbursement, and assessment obligations of the parties and the developers to this agreement. This first map shows you a visual of the anticipated affected roadway I just spoke of, the three areas, and you'll see on your map, highlighted in blue, it's the intersection near Pebble Creek Parkway and McDowell Road, as well as the little curved line down there by the drawn-out Bullard Wash Channel. If this resolution and agreement is approved, it's anticipated that construction would begin in November 2006 and complete in the April and May 2007 timeframe. This second map is just designed to give you a visual of the anticipated improvement district itself, showing that towards the bottom right, or excuse me, bottom-left portion of the screen, that this intersection is within the boundaries of that improvement The community benefits to approving this pre-funding agreement are that it allows construction of this infrastructure to begin about six months earlier than if we had waited for the issuance of the improvement district bonds. Again, the second critical point is the timing of the construction on this area of roadway, allowing the Goodyear Center Point and Westcore Power Center to benefit from the completion of the road improvements in this area, and that provides additional retail opportunities for our citizens. And finally, it aligns construction in this area with currently occurring construction projects, excuse me, also critical to the construction of the intersection at McDowell Road and Pebble Creek Parkway, which is currently a SunCorps project that's ongoing. Finally, identifying some key points to this agreement are that it identifies the specific infrastructure as demonstrated on your project phasing map shown a moment ago that would be constructed as a result of this agreement. It provides for Westcore, Evergreen Devco, and WM Grace to advance payment for the construction of this infrastructure in the area. Westcore and Evergreen Devco would receive reimbursement for the amounts that they pre-funded from the anticipated sale of the improvement district bonds. Note that WM Grace is not anticipated to receive reimbursement because they would be paying cash for this pre-funding agreement. Westcore and Evergreen Devco would then be assessed over a 25-year period to repay the bonds, which is in line with the anticipated repayment period for the improvement district. And then there's a provision in the agreement that if bonds are not sold and the improvement district is not formed, that Westcore and Evergreen Devco would receive reimbursements from the sales tax revenues from their property. Those are the highlights of the agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We also have representatives from a couple of the developers' partners to this agreement, as well as legal counsel and engineering.
Thank you, Kim. Is there any comments from the public or any of the applicants? Seen none, I'd ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only.
Resolution 06-1082, approving a pre-funding and reimbursement agreement regarding the proposed McDowell Road Commercial Corridor Improvement District.
Ask for a motion.
Motion to accept resolution 06-1082 is read by the clerk.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Scott, and a second by Councilmember Holland. Nobody can beat you out of the gates now, Councilmember Scott. Any discussion from council? Call for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Mayor Antoniak?
Aye.
Yes, it's 5-0.
Mayor, can I make a comment? It really doesn't affect anything except to say that, I was pointing out that by putting this money upfront, we'll get the projects started six months sooner to also accomplish something else. Probably it will, we don't know for sure, but it'll probably cost a lot less to do the project.
Good point. Hopefully, I got the engineers back of room nine in his head, yes. Moving on to item 9I. We'll now consider a pylon signs use permit. Harvey Kraus will be back at the podium in front of us.
Mayor and councilman, tired of seeing you now. I'm filling in once again for Steve Carecchio, who's on vacation.
He sure did pick a good day to go on vacation, didn't he?
Yes, he did.
How'd you manage?
The next two items on your agenda are related, so I'd like to discuss those so you can then take individual action. First thing is a use permit for pylon signs, and the second one is a comprehensive sign package. Two, if the council recalls several months ago, hasn't been very recently, that we amended the zoning ordinance, amended the zoning order to allow the council more latitude to approve freeway pylon signs. There was a thought that they may be allowed by right. Now the council has latitude to issue a use permit. And there's some general criteria within the zoning ordinance that gives you guidance on when you should or shouldn't approve pylon signs. However, it is, it is not mandatory. It gives you some flexibility there. So we have received a master sign package from Westcore for their Estrella Falls project. As the pylon signs, to be approved of pylon signs for a use permit, you must be part of a comprehensive sign package. So we have a comprehensive sign package before you, and it involves really two things. Subarea 2 is the first phase of their development. It is, I guess it'd be called their power center, which is a very, it's a very detailed comprehensive sign package just for subarea 2. And then subarea 3 is 30 acres that was in July, on July 10th, the council rezoned that property and incorporated that property into the Estrella Falls project, giving this project contribuity with I-10s. And as part of the comprehensive sign package, the developer, Westcore, has asked the staff to approve, or the council to approve, three pylon signs, maximum of 80 feet high, just north of I-10, along the perimeter of subarea 3. That is the request. So we'll focus on the pylon signs for, this is the picture of a pylon sign. It would identify seven users, there are seven panels. The, at the top area is Estrella Falls, and then Goodyear, Arizona, is displayed at the bottom of the sign in this location. The colors are compatible with the design that they propose for their power center. This gives you a kind of a visual as where it is. We have obviously an elevated freeway at that point, so it's important, and the code allows you to raise the sign as high as needed to get good visibility from the freeway. So you'll see that it varies, but approximately 15 to 30 feet of the sign is really, won't be visible from the freeway very well from traffic, so that's why it limits this area is the area that's visible. There won't be any animation, or it'd be internally lit, but there, part of it will be internally lit, and there won't be any animation, so it shouldn't be a problem for traffic. Here is a depiction of the three signs that are superimposed on the site, just to give you what, they are approximately 500 feet apart. Staff has, another perspective of the sign from another direction. Staff has analyzed the comprehensive sign package as well as the desire to have three pylon signs. Due to the nature, the minimum, generally the minimum requirements of a pylon sign has been is 30 acres minimum size and 1,000 feet of frontage along the freeway. And obviously, this property does do that. Due to the size and scope of the amount of retail that, uses that are contemplated at the regional mall site, as well as the power center, staff felt that we could easily justify two freeway pylon signs. However, we did feel that a third pylon sign, that there should be some incentive, that there should be some performance, it should be based on some performance by the developer. So I had proposed that the use permit have a condition, and that's number one, is basically the third pylon sign, if it's desired by the applicant on a later date, then they would need to submit a use permit that would need to go back through the Planning Commission for review and city council approval. And one of the, and the criteria for evaluating the third pylon sign would be a, getting commitments from five top-tier retail businesses, as illustrated on Exhibit A, I think you might have a copy of that at your dais, of the types of businesses that would be, we would be looking forward to, looking for in this proposal, in this amendment. And this proposal would be good for five years after approval of the first certificate of occupancy for the regional center, which is the 200 acres, 200-plus acres site. Basically, after the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy for subarea 1, that would be the trigger, you have five years to produce an amendment to the use permit to allow for a third pylon sign. The applicant would rather have this an automatic approval. Staff believes that the Planning Commission and city council should review the quality of businesses that are going to be landed in this mall, and to make some judgment as to whether a third pylon sign is merited based upon performance. So that is the use permit proposal. The Planning Commission did stipulate that the two signs, if approved, would be located at least 1,000 feet apart on subarea 3, and that if a third pylon sign is approved at a later date, it would be right in the middle roughly, so the pylon signs would be 500 feet There is, there are some other pylon signs that have been approved in the area, just for you to recollect. You recall, council has approved a pylon sign for Evergreen Devco for their property, which is approximately, be over 2,000 feet away from the first pylon sign for Westcore. And then there is also a pylon sign that has been approved on the At Home project, just to the east of Bullard Avenue for SunCorps Development Companies. It's not pictured on here, but that would be easily over five, well, it'd be over 1,000 feet from a pylon sign, this pylon sign. So that is the pylon signs. And then the comprehensive sign package basically deals with, that deals with subarea for, for just the, as I indicated, just for the power center. Just very briefly to make this, there are three types of signs proposed. At the two prominent corners, B, that would be, there would be basically a wall, corner wall, roughly about six feet in height, and then the, announcing the name of the power center. And then along each entrance is number C. Along McDowell Road, there are three entrances, along Pebble Creek Parkway, and they are the Monument Tenant Sign, which are 20 feet high. The one at the corner looks like this, going for the public. They're referring to it as the Market at Estrella Falls, so that would be the corner. And then the 20-foot-high sign is this one. And that's a reasonable height for the size and the scope of this power center. And then the other signage, D, are just directional signs to allow people to know where the stores are to maneuver within the site. That is in addition to wall signage. There will be wall signage for the various pads and inline businesses. So, but that's all the comments I have. I believe Stephen Earl is here representing Rob Bassett for Westcore. If you have, council has any specific questions?
Thank you, Harvey. Ask if there's any comments on, might as well keep it to either item, just going with the theme.
Thank you, Mayor. For your record, my name is Stephen Earl, and I'm here tonight in behalf of Westcore and Electric Sign Company. I guess I want to thank Westcore. I think they have the full Employment Act of zoning attorneys. Ed Bull represented Westcore on the mall itself. Gary Bernbaum represented them on the development agreement, and here I am on the comprehensive sign plan. I didn't quite understand all that, but I'm happy to be here for them. The biggest issue, obviously, is the use permit for the freeway pylon signs. We think that the comprehensive sign plan for Phase 1, which is the Market, the power center, is in line with the approvals that have been granted by the council on other similar projects, although this is a fairly large power center. I'd like to spend a little bit of time on those freeway pylon signs. I know the council's very concerned about the approval of these kinds of signs, as well you should be. The proliferation of signs along the freeway has a tendency to detract from the attractiveness of that environment. Westcore, if there's ever a company that has had experience in how to market appropriate Westcor, if there's ever a, a company that has had experience in how to market appropriately a regional center, it would have to be Westcor. They've been in the, in the valley for 30 years, and they've built most of the regional malls in the valley. The more recent regional malls, as you know, are all being located along freeways. Paradise Valley Mall, which was built back in 1976, did not require it to be built on a, on a freeway. It was in the center of a village, a village core for the city of Phoenix. Those days are long gone. These major tenants all want to have direct visibility from a freeway corridor. So Santan Village is a recent one done out in Gilbert. Not only do they have full frontage along the freeway, but the, kind of Gilbert has been extraordinarily generous in signage by giving them eight freeway pylon signs. Here, they're asking for three. Now, the size of the two centers is the same, about 330 acres. Your ordinance allows, normally would allow only one for every 30-acre parcel, and when you approved the insertion of this into the overall, bringing it to 330 acres, the code does say that, that you can approve more than just the one, when there is a significantly larger center. Well, we went from 30 acres, which is the minimum, to 10 times that by including this regional center, which, by the way, is the only regional center, all the way along the entire stretch of I-10. There are some power centers along there, but this is the only big daddy along the entire area. So if there was ever, and the second reason for, to justify more than one, is if you have regionally significant tenants, and that's exactly what Westcor is trying to do, is bring those regionally significant tenants. The challenge, of course, they have is while they have 30 acres on the freeway, the regional character of this is north of, of McDowell Road, and even the Market, the power center, is north of McDowell Road. So it's a quarter mile, or even more than a half a mile away from the freeway. So when they're out at ICSE convention getting these tenants, and we all know that they have the power to do that, and they've been doing it for a long, long time, they have to be able to tell them, we're not exactly on the freeway like we are in Gilbert, but we're, we're going to have signings that gets you off the freeway and into the project, so that it can be just as accessible as we need it to be. Well, that, that's why they decided that they would try and build a, a sign that would make you proud. Now, I, when I drove out here today, I paid a lot of attention to all the freeway pylon signs that are, that stretch along I-10, and there are some ones that just went up. And I'm not, I shouldn't name the names of these on, on television, but they're not very attractive, candidly, and they, they sort of attract from, when you're driving along there, you say, boy, we could have done a better job, or that city could have done a better job with that sign. And some of those signs reach 100, you know, 110 feet in height, and they're just a whole bunch of things on them. Whereas you notice here, that there's not two separate things with, with air in between, they've done a good job of making this a one-sided element, by, and they've taken the flourish, that's the architectural element throughout the regional center, and put it at the top, put the, just the seven tenants, not 14, not 21, just seven well-designed signs. They put the name of the center at the top, and they put the name of the city at the bottom. Now, some might say, and I've even heard comments, why don't we have Goodyear at the top? I can understand why you'd want to do that. I can tell you that there was a lot of thought that went into the design of this, because the retailers say, when they come to Westcor, I want to be either at the top, or I want to be at the bottom, because the "I" doesn't go to the middle as much as it goes to the top and the bottom. So the name of the center needed to be at the top, Australia Falls, and we were afraid that if we put Australia Falls at Goodyear, that would put a lot of information at the top that would kind of lose the importance of Goodyear. So we thought, let's put it, let's bookend these signs, so that the "I" goes to the top, and it goes to the bottom. And that's why these things have been designed the way they are, and I, and I guess maybe I'm a little prejudiced because I represent Westcor, but I think they're very good-looking signs, and they're a credit to the city. Present a higher-end image that this regional mall should have. And as they relate, of course, to the, to the freeway itself, they, they will create an appearance as you drive along that will be a credit to the city, as people turn in along Australia Parkway and other places having passed. This, by the way, this is the first regional center that anyone would come to coming from the west. And it's important to have that sign be an attractive one that says, you've arrived in Goodyear, and this is just a step above some other cities that might be closer by. I'm glad to respond to any questions you have. These are 85 feet high. I think Harvey may have said 80 feet, but the, the sign to the top here is 85, and there's that architectural flourish that goes a little bit above that. And I'll make one comment about the, the request of staff that we have two signs and we come back for the third. Obviously, our desire was that we have three signs. We, we felt that we had a legitimate basis for those three signs, because we have 330 acres, and no other, no other major project in Goodyear is going to have that kind of magnitude, at least for a long time. And so we thought, if there was ever a case where three signs would be appropriate, it would be here. Obviously, when you're out marketing at ICSE, it's, there's a big difference between telling a top-tier tenant, you will have a presence on this sign, as opposed to saying, we think we can get you presence on the, on the third sign, we just have to make sure you're on it, and then we'll go back and get approval for it. So we went to staff and said, you know, we're, we're happy to agree to, to have top-tier tenants, but could we just make that administrative? If we, if we get those tenants that are on that list, can we just say that we'll work with you at staff level and demonstrate that we've got the tenants on the, on the list, and then we can be administratively approved, since we know what, exactly what the sign will look like? I think Harvey felt a little uncomfortable with the power that that would give him, and we didn't feel uncomfortable with it. And so he asked us to come back to the commission and council. The, the challenge, obviously, there is, is that in a use permit procedure, there's no guarantee that even after we've got those top-tier tenants, we come back, because you have the discretion in any use permit hearing to say no, we could still not have that third sign. And I made that comment at the planning commission, and I think most of the commissioners said, well, if you bring those top-tier, you can count on the fact that we're going to be okay with it. Obviously, we would prefer an administrative procedure, but we're content that we'll basically live with whatever what the council can feel good about granting here. Obviously, we're going to go out and work very hard with all those tenants to get the third sign, because we think that they're needed, and those top-tier tenants will demand that presence. But having said that, we're, we're, we find the other stipulations of perfectly acceptable. Thank you, Mayor, and I'll respond to any other questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Earl. Is there any other comments from the public? We'll get back to you, I'm sure, with some questions. Mr. Kraus, do you have any other remarks?
Mayor, council, I just want to clarify two things. First, there isn't a requirement that the top-tier businesses cannot locate on the two pylon signs we're recommending for approval. So if Westcor is fortunate enough to get top-tier businesses, that, they can use that, you know, 14 spaces they have now to use, to put them on those signs. So they don't have to be on the third sign, they can be on any of the three signs. So I just wanted to clarify that. Second of all, I'm, I'm, to clarify, the city attorney has pointed out to me, so we can make sure that years from now, and a few years from now, so there's no debate on whether the approval by council is discretionary or not, it suggested that before the words, where it says city council approval, maybe before approval, we use, put the word discretionary approval, both on the use permit and on the stipulation number three for the comprehensive sign package. So in the first sentence on the use permit, it says...
Harvey, any question while you're in the middle of that?
Sure.
Maybe the attorney define the difference between discretionary and special use permit to begin with? Why would we decipher the two? Sorry, before you started...
I just want to make sure that we're clear when we're trying to interpret this later. Our use permit for signs seems to indicate that it's discretionary, but Harvey's, tonight's talking about a trigger point for signs. I just want to make sure that when we're setting up this perimeter on this use permit, that we're all on the same page, that it's going to go through the normal process for our pylon sign ordinance. That's all my, my question, is to make sure we're clear on, on any future interpretation.
How about a past interpretation? Is there, did we use the word discretionary in past?
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, this is a fairly new ordinance, as far as our use permits for pylon, pylon signs, so...
A pylon sign ordinance is brand-new. I mean, this is first test, first go at it, I believe, or second go at it.
If we want to, just backing up a little bit, if we start talking about use permits and special use permits, just as a general course of law, if I go too far stopping. Use permits in law are so, basically set up where you have a set, a set of criterion that you, as a council, evaluate, judging whether a particular use in a zoning district has any adverse impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. You look at hours of operation, setbacks, et cetera, and you go down a set defined criterion your zoning ordinance, and makes certain findings of fact an issue in your use permit. This is, the use permit as part of their pylon ordinance sign deviates a little bit from that, so I don't know if that answers it very well or not, but it, this is a slightly different creature than normal use permit. So I just want to make sure that when we're interpreting this in four years, or five years, or whenever it is, that we're interpreting the stipulation on the same, that we're all on the same page.
Sorry, I cut you off, Mr. Kraus.
No, great.
Okay. Anything else you need to cover? Okay. No comments from the public? Or, sorry, I'll ask, I'm sure Mr. Earl's got a comment based on that past conversation.
Rory told me, just a few minutes before the hearing, was sorry, that he'd like to add the word discretionary in front of approval, and, and of course, that goes to fundamental concern we have with the stipulation, that we always would have the right to come back and file a use permit to, to modify our approved pylon signs and be totally at the discretion of the council, whether you approve the third sign. The idea here was to say, if you get these five top-tier tenants, then you could come back and get the third sign. So now, now we've added the word discretionary, which means we're basically saying, if you get the top-tier tenants, come back, and we, we may approve it, we may not. We went, we went from a kind of an automatic, if you do this, you'll get the third sign, to if you do this, you can apply for it, and maybe you'll get it, maybe you won't. That's unfortunate, because when you're negotiating with tenants at ICSE, you can't say, we have no idea we're going to get this sign or not, but we are going to put you on it if we get it. So we, that's why we'd hope for the administrative procedure, that the council would approve three, subject to us complying with a specific requirement, that then would allow us to, you know, say, look, we don't have that third sign, but here's the criteria that the council has outlined for us, and if we do that, we'll be entitled to it. So the original version of this tip one had it administratively approved, not coming back, but again, we're anxious to go out and do exactly what we promised in terms of getting these tenants and bringing them back to you and having a beautiful center, so we just hope you'll consider that. Thanks, Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Earl. With that, I'm going to ask for a motion. We've heard three different options tonight on Item 9I. It's approved, one option would be approve the recommendation as printed, given to us this evening. The other option would be adding the word discretionary to stipulation number one. And the third option would be the applicant's desire, though he says he would accept, or be content, to use your words, move on. The third option would be administrative, to grant Harvey the powers of being superhuman and go with administrative. So with that, I'll ask for a motion from somebody. Councilmember Holland.
I move that we approve the use permit for two freeway pylon signs as printed, within the Goodyear Plan, Regional Center Planned Area Development, Parcel 14, generally located 697 feet west of Bullard Avenue, north of Interstate 10, subject to stipulations.
Okay, so I have a motion on the table from Councilmember Holland, the second from Councilmember Scott, and the motion is to reflect what was printed this evening prior to this.
Right.
Okay. So we have, what we have in front of us for discussion is our discussion. Councilmember Holland made the motion, I'll let her lead off.
Well, actually, I was going to ask Harvey, the map that you had up earlier, where it showed the new subarea that we had running along the freeway, and there is a parcel of land that is adjacent to that SubArea 3. Kind of refresh my memory and tell me if that area will also have pylon signs on Interstate, up on Interstate 10, or is that just going to be... Would that be part of the wash area?
Mayor, the area, I believe you're referring to, is to the, to the west of, that would be owned by McFlood or Maricopa County Flood Control District, and I don't envision that being, there would be a pylon sign there at all. I, I mean, I should say never, never, but I don't, I don't see it.
So if there were pylon signs that were, would be in SubArea 2, that you could see from I-10, but they would be back off the road?
This, this area right here? Are we going back to the other map?
Harvey, maybe it'd just be helpful if you could point out on the map, on I-10, where currently approved pylon signs are.
Right, right, that would be...
Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah.
There you go. Maybe you could zoom in on that just a little bit. There you go.
Well, I thought, I thought I had remembered seeing that there was another one, but it's quite a ways away.
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Holland, yeah, the Evergreen Defco pylon sign has been approved. There wouldn't be any pylon signs. This property is owned by McFlood, don't envision that being any commercial development significance to merit that in the future. The three pylon signs proposed here. This property is owned by Kang. They don't, they do not have the minimum acreage or area, although the, as I indicated, the, the use permit ordinance does give you a lot of discretion in terms of approving something later down the road, so that's why I'm, I'm reluctant to say never. But it, it wouldn't be recommended by staff. And then there is, there is a pylon sign that's been approved by SunCor on the other side of Bullard, on the east side of Bullard, for their At Home District. That's already been approved.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just trying to picture, I think one of our other council people said that now when they ride down the road, all they can see are the signs out there, just to make sure that we're not overdoing it and not getting them too close together.
Yes, well, okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's where the discretion comes in. Councilmember Lord.
Well, I'm, just going to look at this a little bit differently, and I know this is not in the, what we're talking about, but I'm actually in favor of three pylon signs. You know, I want to give Westcor every sales tool available, bring the top-tier stores in, to bring the other quality stores that we've all been, you know, dialoguing about, and there's many other smaller stores to bring in. And, you know, I want to see a great tax base. I want to see that infrastructure paid off quickly, and that takes good stores. And I don't want to start them out on a crutch. It's a regional shopping center, it's going to bring a lot of people in. And as a salesperson, going out and trying to sell this, I would not want to be jeopardized my sales expertise, because I couldn't give them a space. And so I, and my feeling is, we give it up front, three signs.
Okay. Councilmember Sussa.
Thank you, Mr. Earl. Well, you all know how I feel about pylon signs.
You love them.
Oh, yes, I love them, yeah. Just go east, man, I love them. All you have to do, prove my point. But let me, let me say this. When I looked at this presentation, I was with the city manager, having my conference meeting with him, and I pointed this out to him. I says, you know, what I'd like you to do is to take this template and make this the standard, if we're going to have these things in the city of Goodyear, and make this the standard for every sign that comes into the city, because this is an attractive sign, very attractive. It's something that I can go for. It's something that will be pleasing for the city of Goodyear, and it's not gaudy, it's there, it's in line with what the Westcor has for Australia Falls, and I'd be proud to support it. I did talk with Mr. Earl about the, the Goodyear sign, and Stephen, I concede it with you, that it should be at the bottom, but it is at eye level, so we'll be able to see it. But it does balance off the entire sign, so that's good. But like I say, I would recommend staff that you take a hard look at this, and, and every, make every attempt to, to pattern our, our future signs, when we're, when we're asked to put them in, if they can meet this standard, which I think is great.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Earl. Thank you for your comments. I stand, no other comments. I would just echo Councilmember Sussa's remarks, definitely. A standard to be upheld is... I would just echo Councilmember Suss's remarks, definitely a standard to be upheld as it relates to these signs. And I don't think, at least, nobody really addressed this, but I think from my perspective when I'm sitting here, I think the spirit is that, you know what, get five of them on this list and come back and you've got my stamp of approval. I think there's, and I think the discretion is, you might get one that's, though this is an exhaustive list, you might get one that's not on that list, that we still might consider on par with the rest of those on that list and we'd want to be able to have that discretion to be able to approve those. So at least I would want to be able to have the discretion to approve those.
So you're not willing to amend this to the three signs?
I, I think, I think we leave it to discretion. I say come, me personally, it's up to you all. I'm running the meeting and I'm not running the floor necessarily, so. I mean, you, there is a motion on the floor to approve as, as...
Can I have another motion for amend that motion to number three signs? We do that, we have to call the president.
You can make, you can make a motion to amend the motion on the floor to...
Include three signs.
To include the third sign as an administrative, through, the third sign could be granted through an administrative approval process based on this. Based on Exhibit A, I would assume, could be the, the other option, to please the applicant. Mayor, council, the purpose in Exhibit A is just for illustrative purposes only. It wasn't to tie your hands and that's the reason, I guess, speaking for staff, didn't feel comfortable making it administrative because I, what is top-tier to one person may not be top-tier to another. So I feel like it is a discretionary decision.
Plus, if you, if you leave this to administrative approval, Mr. Earl will not get the same salary.
I, I, I think, I, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to drive your conversation on the floor, but I, personal, personal opinion here is, I say come, come back. It's, it's a bit of an incentive to drive them to this list. My personal belief, but attorney, do you have a comment?
Well, I was just trying to understand the motion. I thought you made a motion for three signs.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, did? Oh. You amended the motion for three signs. Oh, I apologize for talking over you then, Councilmember Lord, that was my fault.
I accept that.
Okay, well, I amended the motion to approve all three signs is our second for that amendment. I'm standing a second, the amendment, okay, sorry. I apologize. I didn't mean to walk all over you there. With that said, I'll call for a vote. All those in favors of approving the request for use permit for three freeway pylon signs within the Goodyear Plan Regional Center, PAD, Parcel 14...
You said three. Is that a...
Two. Well, I mean, it's based with stipulations.
As written.
As written by staff is what I was getting towards. So with that, all those in favor signify by stating "aye."
Aye.
All those against?
Nay.
Four to one, the ayes have it. Item 9J, consider a comprehensive sign package for Astral Falls. Harvey, you have anything further? Applicant anything further? Any public comments? No public comments. I ask for a motion to consider a comprehensive sign package for Astral Falls.
You're not making a motion.
I'm afraid to say, but I move that we approve the request for a comprehensive sign package for Astral Falls, approximately 397-acre commercial regional center generally located along McDowell Road between Bullard Avenue and Pebble Creek Parkway with the Goodyear Plan Regional Center Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations.
Councilmember Lord made a motion, seconded by Councilmember Scott. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by stating "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, say "nay." Ayes have it, five to zero. Thank you very much, staff. Thank you very much, applicant.
And wait a minute, I'd like to make a comment. Well, thank you very much, you did a great job.
Yes, you did. Very good. Is it our youngest mayor yet? She's...
Acting, very much acting tonight. Information items, ask staff for summary of follow-up action items.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in addition to the staff follow-up, I would like to point your attention to the item under the information tab. That's specifically the, our effort to move forward with the Town of Buckeye on a risk management approach that could net the city from one day, share some services with them and result in both parties being winners of an approach. So if you have a chance to read that and provide staff with any comments you might have on it. As it relates to staff follow-up items, staff will be meeting with Mr. Matlin in reference to his utility bill and will provide you an update regarding that matter. Further, staff will schedule a work session to discuss the Lipsco wastewater treatment plant odor issues, with legal providing a summary of the kind of city options available to address this matter.
I have a question, Mr. Stephen, is my calendar incorrect or we do not have a meeting next week?
Do we have a meeting on Monday or Tuesday?
Do you want one?
No. Tuesday?
No, we don't have it.
No, that's the following week, Tuesday.
We have nothing planned, but we do have...
Wednesday.
...information that we have discussed with you about the possibility of a very special meeting this week.
Yes.
That would be on Wednesday, as currently planned.
It's currently, is it currently scheduled for two o'clock still?
Yes, planning for two o'clock on Wednesday.
Yes.
It's an open meeting to discuss the latest actions on the spring training facility.
Has that been posted, Jim?
And the meeting will be held at room 117 up in the other building, I'm sorry.
Has it been posted?
It will be posted tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
Prior to two o'clock to meet the requirements.
I would just, I would ask the rest of the council in terms of the Lipsco issue. My personal preference is to see draft language of a resolution or some discussion that we can take action that evening concurrently, if we desire to send a letter to the Arizona Corporation Commission at the same time that the presentation is in front of us with Lipsco. That's my personal desire, I don't know if anybody else has that desire.
When are we going to have this meeting?
I think that's to be scheduled, but I'd like, I personally would like to see it concurrently scheduled.
Concurrent decision-making.
Right. Yeah, so discussion from Lipsco and then up-down as to whether or not there's any action.
Well, there's more, more research, but there may be other options outside of just preferring the corporations' commission members such as nuisance law, et cetera. So we can talk about that.
I think all that, but my personal experience with private regulated utility in the state, the Arizona Corporation Commission and a resolution from an elected body to an elected body will carry a lot of weight within a private utility. What's that? And we could, that's always, that's always an option as well. Is there any inquiries from any of the council members directly to staff? Any, is there something else, Stephen?
We have some material for you on your way out.
Okay, so, thank you very much for your patience, everybody, this evening as I ran the meeting, appreciate it. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.